America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any board and committee meetings? Public hearings? Town administrator report? How's that? Didn't forget.
Thank you. So we've got some good financial news anyway. Our insurance carrier, Maya, offers a rewards program on an annual basis and Ellen has taken the lead in that. And we've been notified that we received $3,812 in credits, which is $1,000 more than we got last year. So it's a reduction in our insurance premiums based on some of the coursework that the manager's undertaking that would limit our liability. The Governor's Academy, I had a visit from them yesterday, from Christopher Weisher came in and presented us with, and Peter Quimby, and presented us with a gift of $9,000. It was a commitment that they had made to us earlier in the year. They purchased the Dr. Duff's property, therefore it became exempt, so they weren't required to pay the property taxes on it, but they made a commitment to pay them for the rest of the year. So that's the $9,000 gift they gave us yesterday. We also received notification from FEMA of a storm reimbursement of $31,347. Chief Riley, who's our emergency management director, completed the paperwork over a course of months. There was a lot of back and forth, but we did finally realize the reimbursement, which was great. Mantafield, the work is completed. Tim Meehan has received the final report from Ransom Environmental. He's putting together his final billings. Once I have that, it'll all be forwarded to council to send out the payment notification. We received notification from the Elections Division that our ballot question was received and will appear on the November state election ballot. So that was good news. Everything was in order. We also, the Conservation Commission, have been notified that we're currently in the process of moving all of our town records into climate control storage facility. And in the process, actually prior to the relocation, the records were stored in the trailers on Bossner Road that you're aware of. And unfortunately, many of them were severely damaged and will need to be destroyed. We can't salvage them. So what the Conservation Commission is doing is they're providing an opportunity for residents to apply for and obtain a certificate of compliance before the final destruction. So the CONCON wants everyone to be aware of this and suggests that they take advantage of this opportunity if they haven't gotten their final certificate of compliance, because once they are destroyed, it'll be really difficult for them to determine any kind of substantial compliance. So they're going to send out notifications.
Tracy, can you explain that a little bit? I mean, you mean buildings that are waiting for, you know, occupancy? I mean, what?
It's a Conservation Commission. It's a certificate of compliance. So it's a final closeout of the permit. And some people never close them out. So he wants anyone that is awaiting that final closure to get in contact with them to see if they can somehow find a record or go through everything before they're destroyed. He is going to be sending out notifications to anyone who had an existing permit. So they'll, you know, hopefully they'll hear it tonight.
These are DEP permits and things.
They'll get a notification from the office prior to the destruction.
Kind of drives the message home how sorely we need.
Jan, you got that for the paper, right? That's important.
And we, CZM is going to be holding their annual coastal sweet beach cleanup on September 17th. Becky McKnight is going to be the contact person on that, just so you're aware that's happening. And I also need to request a surplus declaration. We have two pieces of equipment at the DPW, a 1985 Ford 66 10 tractor and a 1985 Barber Beach surf rake that they would like to surplus and trade in for a new offset inline slope mower.
So we're not doing the beach cleaning anymore?
We have not been doing beach cleaning since the 2000s and that piece of equipment has been left there outside the elements for so long. I believe James quoted more than $8,000 in repairs to even make it functional. But we haven't, we haven't done beach cleaning in years.
All right. Motion to declare surplus.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
No, wait a minute. I have a question. Are there any other equipment that's outside getting ruined?
Nope.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on to new business, is there any other questions for Tracy on her report? Okay. Under new business, we have some FY '17 appointments and the hours follow. John Ferrara is here, right? And John is wanting to be appointed to the personnel board, and I think that would be great. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And now is there any discussion for John? Questions from the board?
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, John. Patrick M. Hefenin, are you here tonight?
I don't see him.
We can make an appointment to committees without someone being present. He wants to, or has expressed the need or the urge to be on the recreational committee. And I'd like a motion for that.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank him too for stepping up.
Oh, yeah. Nice to see you. Has asked to be on the Board of the Boston's Trail Committee, and that would be great. So any, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you too for stepping up.
People getting married. One-day liquor license. I know that...
Election workers.
Where are we going? Okay, good. Skipped over that. See, I was trying to get you out of here. We have election workers. Esther Bernier and Jan Forrest. I would take a motion on both.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, people getting married. I talked to them earlier and they're getting married at Plum Island Airport. And it is going to be on Saturday, September 3rd, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I need a second.
Mike, they got their signatures from you and everything on the turnpike, right? So that's really good. Did you have some questions?
No, I'll second it though.
Then, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license for Spencer Pierce Little Farm on Saturday, September 17th, 2016, 5:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. That's an early wedding. That's you guys, right?
Yeah, that's our daughter. Actually, I once let go of her too. She's a corporal, a marine.
Good.
And so is her husband, Len, he's corporal and reserve. So they're really excited to...
And it's a great place, too. So two great places to get married. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, folks. It's going to be one of those nights. We have 2016 business license renewals as filed. Mike Morris doing Sneller BMW Performance 26 Middle Road, Unit 1, general business, auto. I would take auto and marine. I would take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, everyone's here. This is, I read it. We are closed. This is a recommendation of Fish Commissioners and Shellfish Warden, who is here also tonight, regarding the Sunday closure of the flats and the ability to open the closed flats. So as I understand it now, the flats are closed and sometimes they open this time of year? Why don't you come up so that we can hear Peter?
Should we make him give his name, too?
Yeah. You guys can give your names.
Office board.
And Peter Fatino.
Yeah, right now the flats are closed on Sunday, October 1st. And we're recommending that you keep them closed year round.
Okay.
And in the past, what had happened, they would close like a Monday and Sunday and Monday at some points during the year. And during an extended closure for rain or red tide, the Shellfish Warden would have the ability to open that when conditions were right and the flats were due to be opened. He could open it that closed day, that one week, to make up for some of the time that the guys lost clamming during the extended closure. What he had to do was contact one selectman, you'd have to come before the board, and, you know, basically get their approval or let them know, notify them that he was going to do that. It would open just for that one day and then would revert back to closed again. So we'd like, we recommend that Paul have that ability. And the reason we want the flats kept closed is due to the stress on the flats right now with the rain closures. And Paul will talk to that better than I can.
And you've had perfect weather, so it's just been...
Yeah, long clam season.
Paul, go ahead.
It goes ten days, since probably November.
Okay. So that's a lot of clam.
Talk about Monday, too. You decided against that?
No, we decided against that.
Okay.
We figured we'd just do Sunday year round.
Okay.
Instead of doing from March 1st to October 1st.
All right.
Sundays and Mondays, just do it the whole year, just for Sundays.
Before we take a motion, Paul, what are you seeing out there? Is there seed? I mean, does things look good for the...
Yes, yeah.
So this is part of...
People are doing the green crabbing, are doing a good job.
Good.
Keeping the seed around, too.
I have not heard yet from Bruce or from Marine Fisheries where that stands. Have you, Peter?
Yes.
Oh, so you just got new. You got information for me? Wow!
A little bit. I just, I did send an email to...
Kelly?
Kelly, at DMF. And she said that they, it wouldn't be before September. When the money's released and they have to have their budget, in the earliest it would be, that money would be reused in September.
All right. Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion beyond what we've already discussed? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Old Business. Before we take a request for marshals under Old Business, too, I would like to say that if people can harken back to the fact that we did have a request from the town for a grant to CZM to take and study how our marshes were keeping up. Well, CZM released the news on the grants and we didn't get it. So I would like the town to realize that. Under Old Business, we have a request of Marshal Jespersen to discuss the renovation of the barn at Jespersen's property at Marsh Meadows Lane. Did we table that, Marshal?
Good evening. Yeah, we did table that. And the reason we tabled that was, well, first of all, Marshal Jespersen, 169 Elm Street, Byfield, Massachusetts. Okay. Now, we tabled that looking for, to see if there was more information. I was going to go out, did go out, talk to all the folks who were available, who might have some idea of the age of the wing of the barn. And so I had, the only person who had any firsthand knowledge of it was Kay Molten. And, because she lived there as a kid. That was her grandparents' place. And, but she had, her mother had written a diary of her time there. Unfortunately, there is no mention of that barn or the wing in the diary. It was all, you know, how many kids? What did you cook? All of that kind of stuff. So I was unable to get any more information for you as to the age or which part of the barn went up first. But I did do the due diligence. Didn't find anything written anywhere on that, nor was I able to find any people who had any first or even secondhand knowledge.
Anyone that can remember from the board, our Ellen, we tabled it for you to do the due diligence, or did we also table it for, to get some information from the Historical Commission? Or was it just tabled it for, where do we stand with the Historical Commission?
Okay.
Can you remember, Ellen?
Yep, I have. I thought in the...
I mean...
Oh, pause. I'm going to recuse myself.
I wondered when that was coming.
Let's see. Motion was made by Selectman Bear, seconded by Selectman Colby, to allow the removal of the barn L and to keep restrictions and covenants in place. Following discussion about the requirements set forth in the building restriction agreement, Appendix A, Marsh Meadow Barn, motion was made by Selectman Bear, seconded by Selectman Colby, and voted unanimously to table the request for the review, and the review was by Marshal.
Now, I respect the fact, especially the way you have taken care of things, that, but are we okay with the Historical Commission? Is it finally, does anyone know? I mean, we can probably okay that contingent on the Historical Commission. Do we have a problem with them signing off? Does anyone know? Were they part of that, Marshal? Can you remember? Did you go to them?
I did not go to them.
Would it fall under that demolition?
Well, no. It doesn't fall under the demolition clause because of the fact that we're preserving basically the major portion of the barn. And so if it is your wish that I go to them...
Was there a restriction? Was there a covenant?
There is a restriction.
On the whole building?
Hard to say, right? It's hard to say for me right now.
Martha might have a little. She's coming up for clarity.
Basically, the restriction, it was a building restriction on the entire farm, basically. It was viewed as kind of an important farm landscape. But the selectmen do hold the restriction, so it's really, you know, within your purview, I think, to...
So it wasn't so much the Historical Commission that sets that aside? That was when they asked for the subdivision and some of the work to be done?
It was part of the open space residential subdivision.
Good. Thank you for straightening that out.
Okay, good.
Good. That's good clarity.
So we were supposed to keep it as a farm? Well, farms have barns.
So it's a farm that, you know, the entire, all the structures there contribute to the importance, the significance of it. But, you know, there is that possibility if something is in disrepair or whatever you have.
I went and took a good look at it. In the wing of the barn, it's very old. It's so deteriorated and twisted. If you got crazy and wanted to restore the wing, I don't know how much it'd be original anymore. It's, I mean, it's done.
Comes a point in time where it's beyond repair.
And like I said, Marshal's going to try to do what he can anyway.
When you, when you enter the property, you see the main barn. You don't pick up on the wing. What you see is the main barn, which is, seems to be what they're trying to preserve.
Martha clarified the whole thing. It's really not historical covenant or restriction placed by the Historical Commission that we have to worry about. The Historical Commission, it was just part of the open space subdivision when we put it in. And that was the planning board, and you're speaking basically for the planning board.
Right, right. And John Weiss and I did go take a look at it after the first request and were in agreement that it needs some help.
Great. Thanks. I'd take a motion.
All right. So you need a motion to demolish the wing only.
What is it you want us to do?
Let's go back to the original, I think...
That was the L, right?
If we could, Helen.
The motion was made to allow the removal of the barn L and to keep restrictions and covenants in place.
You okay?
Yeah.
Is there a motion on that?
Yeah, so moved.
Is that what you still want to do?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Alicia? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks to your patience.
Thanks, Martha. That cleared that up really well. So Tracy, you're going to help me a little on this because is this, the first one especially, or both of them, because it's the Zoning Board of Appeals that is an alternate and it's also his appointment to the CONCON. I mean, what are we doing on the second one? Let's do the first one first, because that's without encumbrances, right? All right. This is Doug Packer's appointment as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We approved it by the Selectman on 6/28/16, pending a review by Town Council, and the approval of the following document is required. So when I read that, did she find anything problematic?
She had an opportunity to contact the lead of council of the Ethics Division to explain what the situation was and see what action, if any, Doug would be required to take should he, should the board decide to appoint him to this position. And what you see in front of you is the disclosure statements. And basically, he's just making you, as his appointing authority, and me also as his appointing authority, as the Conservation Commissioner, Conservation Agent. He's making us aware that there's this, that he's holding both of these jobs and, you know, just to kind of shine the light of day on it so that there's no ethics violations in the future.
Yeah. I had to do something similar, and I believe was Paul Brown was in there, and he said, because we were under 10,000 people, they view us as a special managerial branch, and you're allowed extreme latitude from what cities would be. And the biggest thing they said to me is to make sure everybody knows, it's trying to hide it is the problem, and file it with the town clerk. Write a letter, have it notarized, have it on file. That's what they told me when I was doing things, so.
So you have the forms in your paperwork.
That are submitted, yeah.
Ellen will ask you to execute, and then they'll put on file with the town clerk.
So do we need just to make a motion to appoint as an alternate to the zoning board?
I think we already did that, didn't we?
All right, so the first motion we're looking for is an appointment as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals for Doug Packer. Can I have...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, as I understand it, though, on this one, do you appoint him as Conservation Agent, or do we appoint him as both? Or do we appoint him to the Conservation Commission? How's that go?
I would appoint him to the Conservation Commission and to the ZBA and technically under the legislation that created the Town Administrator Board of Selectment for Government.
Right.
I'm supposed to make a recommendation to his appointment, and you confirm it?
So are we going to, you're making that recommendation?
This doesn't expire until 6:30, right?
6:30, 17?
17, 2017.
Yeah, so why is it on here now?
Because it starts...
7/1/2014?
Yeah.
But we're in 2016, right?
We're in 2017. July 1 is 2017, fiscal year 2017.
But right now, but that's next year. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. So I thought his appointment expired next year.
His appointment does expire, June 30th, 2017.
So why is it on the agenda now?
You're acting on a disclosure. You're not appointing him to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
You're appointing him to ZBA, and then you're signing his disclosure.
Okay.
Could we back up to number one for a minute? We need to vote to accept and file the disclosure.
Okay.
Motion from someone.
I move that we vote on the disclosure and have it filed with town clerk.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have we covered all that now?
No, now you need to do number two.
All right.
Now, how are we, what is the, what's the best way to handle that? Ellen, what do you got over there?
Vote to sign and file with the town clerk.
Sign and file.
The disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
When a boarder, did you vote for it to be quite like serious?
I don't, no, it's a little bit, I was confused. So we're not appointing him here, right? We've already voted to appoint him. This is just...
I'm talking about number one.
Yeah, I don't think that...
For the re...
What was the first, what was the first one?
Could I clarify? Could I clarify?
Sure.
So he was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 28th, pending review by Town Council. So you approve his appointment?
The alternate, the alternate, yep.
We voted on that then.
And now what you're voting on is to accept and file the...
Disclosure forms.
Disclosure form.
Two of them, right?
Twice.
Yeah.
So I voted to accept those two disclosure forms.
You did.
I did.
You didn't raise your hand when everyone else...
No, because I don't, it was, I was confused.
Okay? Everyone okay?
So have we voted on the second one? I don't think so.
No, we didn't.
We did, okay.
See? It's not just me tonight?
Go back for a second. I think when Susan was appointed to the Media Committee, I'm not, I think she's in the same boat, right?
She'll need to file a disclosure?
No.
Even though she works on the IT?
You know what? It's just as easy to file a disclosure, no?
I don't have any notes with me on that. No, there are a lot of positions in town that have already been designated as special municipal employees. This is not one of them. That's why you're taking this action. And also because of his, his role, he works under Sam Jocelyn, who's the, in charge of inspectional services. He's the department manager. So Doug works under Sam. And now he's going to be an alternate on the ZBA, which would be ruling on Sam's decisions. That's why we brought it to Ethics, to understand could he do it. You know, he has specific expertise in this area, so we could benefit from him serving in that alternate role. But we wanted to make sure that there were no conflicts. So that's why I wanted for Ethics for review in Town Council.
And that's, that's what I was concerned with.
Okay?
All right.
It doesn't pertain to Susan, right?
Moving on to citizens' concerns. Do we have any?
I would just like to bring up one thing about the Highway Department and the roads, how the great job that they've been doing. A lot of people have come to me and said this is the best they've ever seen the roads, and they're very, very happy with them. I just want to pass that on.
It's pretty amazing that a crew of that size has accomplished what they have last summer and this summer. Unbelievable.
And do everything else that they're doing.
Yeah, they do a lot. Yes, they do.
Yeah, I've got a lot of cyclists especially have been complimenting me. A lot of them from Newburyport are just thrilled to bike in our town rather than theirs.
I'm just going to blame them.
Get a little longer run. We have correspondents. And the correspondence, the first piece we have, we have the person here. Donnie, I saw you. There you are. Do you want to get up and explain a little bit what's going on? And your invitation for all of us and everything, and I think what you've done is pretty wild. It's good.
So my name is Don Jarvis. I live in Highford Road in Newbury. And this spring slash summer, I've been working with several different community groups, as well as the high school, Pearson Plaza, Pearson Hardware Store, and some other local businesses. What I've done is I got an old nineteen sixty-six stand-up mailbox. I had the high school kids scrape it down and repaint it like a, like an American flag. Very similar. It has red and white stripes going on the side. The top is blue with white stripe, with white stars in the back, and the side is white with blue stars. Right now, it's sitting at the Byfield Fire Department. I placed it there roughly about two weeks ago. Since then, it has been nonstop flow of American flags coming in. Just this past weekend, we collected sixty-two flags. I was going through them as I was, before I came here. One flag is the Bennington flag, I just learned. It has a half crescent of stars and two on top, and the number seventy-six in the middle. That, I don't know the exact date. It's probably eighteen hundred or seventeen hundred, if I had a guess. It has thirteen stars, which I thought was very unique.
Wow.
It is four by six, and it's a little white mark that I'm going to try to clean up and then fly at the burying ground on Hy Road, given the history of it. I will say we're probably at several hundred flags collected already. Last Thursday, Deputy Chief, what's his name, drawing a blank on his name, Fire Jamveron, Deputy Chief Jamveron, called me up to have me pick up three full trash bags and empty the box, because it was overflowing with flags. And then over the weekend, I got another call. And so I had to sit the friend out while I was away to empty it. It was full Saturday and Sunday. Since then, it's been full about four times. So it's been a crazy response. This coming Saturday, I'm doing a gathering, inviting the community to come out to bring up their American flags, if they haven't done so already. And that's going to have, have a few speakers that's going to talk about flag etiquette, flag history. Domino's Pizza wanted to get involved. They're donating pizzas to a food booth that I've already checked with the Board of Health to make sure everything is in compliance. We're going to have pizza, hot dogs, soda, and water. Every dollar that comes in from that food booth will be donated back to the Byfield Fire Department.
What time is it?
At noon time. As an appreciation and token of thanks for allowing us to put the box there. We have someone from the state is coming. Secretary Yurina, who is in charge of veteran services, has been invited. If he can't make it, he will send someone from his office. Karen Taylor, our veteran rep, will be present. I'm waiting to hear back from Lenny and Bruce as well. And I also reached out and invited you all via email if you are interested and available. I know it's kind of last minute, but I've had every weekend booked up, and this is my only free, free Saturday.
Okay.
So I'm trying to make it work.
That's all right.
But the response has been great. I've been getting a lot of phone calls. I know Deputy Chief has told me they've been getting a lot of phone calls as well. So I think it's been a great feature so far. And obviously, there's been, there's a need that's being taken care of, given the response of flags so far. Our Boy Scouts, I've been working pretty close with Eric Town. Our Boy Scouts will be doing, doing burning ceremonies to properly dispose of these flags. Between Eric, myself, and one of the firefighters, we've talked about possibly doing it at the Byfield Fire Station, where they can oversee it. It's in a controlled, safe environment. And we can also invite the public to join us as well. That's something we still got to talk and work logistics between the fire chief, deputy fire chief, Boy Scouts, and myself. But if not there, we will find another location. It was just considered an ideal, because the flags are already being brought there, so.
That was a lot of work. Thank you for all you've done.
It was a lot of work, but it's, it's been a rewarding job. I think it was great getting the kids involved. And it's important to teach the kids flag history. It's not something that's kind of taught in school, whether it be public or private. So the flag etiquette and flag history, I feel, is important to go from ground up, teaching kids to adults. And had not been in the military, I wouldn't have known it. So it's, it's not a very common topic.
Thank you, Donnie.
Donnie, thanks so much.
See you Saturday.
And I think people, when they think of Donnie, shouldn't just remember the flags, too. Just remember how much he did on the cemeteries and stuff like that, too. I have to say I'm going to be at the Berkshires this weekend at a wedding. So can we be sure that we have people there?
Yeah, I intended, I think I told Donnie that I'd be there, so.
All right, great.
And I'm planning on going to.
Great. Donnie, thanks. Thanks so much. Heading into other correspondence, we have a memorandum, I guess, from August third, which anyone is capable or able to read, from Peter Erickson. And he's the past chair of the Pub, Pomeland Study Committee. And he's commenting on some of the problems that are still ongoing and we're trying to solve on Pomeland. So that letter is available for anyone to read. We also have a thank you note from Autumn. How do we pronounce that guy's hut, huddle, huddling? From the All Times Association for their bike ride, right? That went well in our town, and they, and we all, and they were thanking us for how well it went. We also have a letter that is explaining, I don't think we have to make any motion on this. It's just correspondence, but it is twenty-one, if I remember, twenty-one Marsh Ave. And it is a new doc going on, going in.
Oh, yeah, 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 I remember that now.
Is that Don, near Fred Thurlow, twenty-one Marsh Ave somewhere?
It's going to be right there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. So any other questions on the correspondence from anyone? Review of meeting minutes. I would take a motion on July twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, from people that were at that meeting.
Motion to approve is read.
Do I have a second? Do we have any questions or discussion on those meeting minutes? All those in favor? We also have April fifth, two thousand sixteen, which is that long and arduous one.